This is the February meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a roll call, please. Thomas Sharp?
Here.
Wallace Van Buren?
Here.
Ed Richard is absent. Greg Pill is absent. Craig Thomas?
Here.
Janice Bartel?
Here.
Ed Carmichael, here. We have a call. Okay, rise. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're standing, stay standing, we have to swear you in. I swear that all testimony I'll give tonight will be the truth, and nothing but the truth will help me, God.
I do.
And any telephones, electronic devices, a little science at this point. Now, you've had the minutes delivered to you via email, is that right?
That was for the Community Development Committee.
That was for Community Development?
Right. The other Jeff minutes are in the Commissioner's packet.
Okay. We have a motion on the minutes. So move.
Second.
No petitions or corrections? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Minutes are passed. The first issue tonight is the Midway Auto House regarding the property located at 311 East Ogden Avenue, special use permit to allow for the sale of used automobiles in a B2 business district. Is the petitioner here? And if you haven't, would you sign in? There's a sign-in at the podium. Okay. Like to tell us what you would like to do?
Basically, we're trying to open a dealership, used car dealership. We have a location right now in the Bridgeview, actually two locations in the Bridgeview. We've been in the business for 20 years. We're selling mostly newer cars, two, three, four years old cars. So it's not like a junkyard, it's nice, nice looking cars. We're not the high end, but mid-grade classes, about between 15,000 and 20,000, that's our price range. We own location that we, in the Bridgeview. Actually, we were, in the beginning, we wanted to buy it, but we didn't agree on the price here, so we're trying to rent it and get special use. I know it's been for many years used for that purpose, so it's not that we're trying to break something here, or, you know. I know about what happened three years ago when it was flooded, so I guess we're first brave ones who are trying to get in the same location after it was flooded. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Okay, well, first we'll go to the public. If there are any public comment or questions? If not, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, this property is 301 or 311 East Ogden. It's the former Alpha Motors. It's operated as car sales in some respects since 1986, but has been vacant since the floods of 2013. If you remember, there was the large storm event. I did include photos of that. The good portion of the inventory area on this site does take on water in large storm events, and I think that's ultimately what seized the last use that was there. This applicant has provided to us a parking plan, parking for customers in front of the building, which exists now, parking behind the building for staff and extra inventory. And then although they had provided a parking plan to us for 119 spaces, that didn't meet our standards for lot width, or minimum requirements for parking stalls or drive aisles. So we had provided the applicant the last approved site plan with Alpha Motors, which was acceptable, and working with the applicant, they had determined that that was a better course of action. So if they would gain approval, that they would have to re-stripe the lot to meet those conditions. The landscape at this property has been somewhat deficient, at least over the last three years. We would be asking them to restore the landscape to what the approved plan we have on file for it, which will give some additional screening for some of the cars. The largest concern about the site is that we will be duplicating what was approved last time. It is a site that is known to flood. They will have inventory that is there, so they will need to be very reactive to it. And there is no investment into the property itself to try to remedy any of the issues that are occurring at the site.
Go to the Commissioners. Dr. Thune, Ms. Bartel?
Well, I live down that block, and the flooding is a significant problem. It was in 2013, and I would guess that it would be again without some remedy to that. That's my big concern. The other thing is that the used cars aren't really preferred on comprehensive plan along the Ogden Avenue strip. The staff is, had some concern about the parking situation with 119 total, so I...
Yeah, we decreased that, we lowered to, like it was previously with Alpha Motors, we took a same plan like we had before.
Mm-hmm. Well, I guess my concern is if we have the problem with flooding before and there's no remedy, what makes us think it won't be happening again? And you'll have the loss of inventory. I just think it's an opportunity with it vacant to do something a little different and maybe fix the flooding issue. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
I just wanted to ask, you know, you referenced, you know, the braveness of moving back into the site after what happened in 2013, and I just want to know, how does it fit into, I guess, what would be the plan if this...
Realistically, that was like 500-year flood, so it's not happened every year, and everybody knows that. So we know that it's a risk, but it's a slim chance it's going to happen in the next couple of years. And what we have, we have extra space in the back of a building, so if something like that, we're going to know that big storm is coming, so we can move inventory in the back, because there's still a lot of empty space in the back. And hopefully, it's not going to happen. And only one corner that was really in it, under deep water, so at least we can move all inventory from that front corner right on Ogden and, what, that street, Black Hawk?
Black Hawk.
Black Hawk.
Yeah. So that section is really bad. Rest of the lot is, it's okay, so.
Okay. Sir, I neglected to get your name, if you'll give your name for the record?
Max. Max.
Max?
Max Maksalis.
Spell the last name?
M-A-K-S-E-L-I-S.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Okay, so like you just said, they gave you pictures, and...
Yes.
So you know where the trouble spot are if you get that 500-year storm again, or 100-year storm is what probably was, but you're aware, you have Plan A and Plan B in mind?
Yes, we do.
And how you're going to do it, what you're going to do it, when you're going to do it?
Yes, we have.
And...
We know that we have to remove those vehicles. That's our investment, so we're going to protect it. It's not like...
It's all yours. Yeah, right. It's not ours.
Yes.
So I wish you best of luck, because if something else goes in there, there has to be so much more preliminary landscaping and whatever, to combat the flooding problem.
Yeah, probably you have to do detention bonds and everything if you're trying to change.
You have to do underground storage, because there's not enough, lots too small to...
Right.
...put on-site detention.
Any site plan changes would trigger a detention requirement.
Okay. All right, so, good luck.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure they showed you the pictures.
Yeah, I know. I know exactly what happened.
Mr. Carmichael?
Well, there are a lot of pros and cons of this, you know, there. It seems that the cons line up a lot more strongly than the pros do, but I think there's certainly, from the community's point of view, more desirable uses for that property. On the other hand, you're willing to assume the risk of this. I'm not enthusiastic about it, but I won't stand in your way. I'll support your endeavor.
Thank you. Now, I have a problem with it, too, in that you're coming in without knowing what you're getting into, without any remediation, and I know that that's a costly situation, and that's probably why it's sat vacant for this period of time, is the cost of remedying it. But I'm sure you all read in your packet that the Community Development people have felt could not give a pass on this.
The Economic Development Committee gave a negative recommendation based on the issues with the property and the comprehensive plan recommendations.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's get a motion on the floor.
One more time.
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Butler. I'm the real estate agent for The Cellar.
Uh-huh.
We've had the property for sale for about maybe six or seven months. Prior to that, it was listed with another broker. This property's been under contract probably four times to different retail developers to redevelop the site, and every time the deal has fallen through, because when they go in to get the economics to find out what it costs to redevelop the site, the figure's about $900,000, which would equate the land value to about $60 to $70 a square foot. By the time you re-engineer everything, knock it down, do underground water storage and everything else, they all walk. They said it just costs...
I can understand it.
And we just have so much activity on the site. The owner with the lease, with Max, he has it in the lease that he understands the risks associated with any potential flooding on the property. But just to back up, though, as far as the cost, that is the biggest obstacle that we have, is the cost to, you know, re-engineer the property and everything else. And like I say, four different developers have had it under contract, they had tenants, and they could not make the numbers work. And if The Cellar were to sell it, he paid a lot for the property. He's willing to take, you know, a loss to a degree, but he's just to the point where he would just rather lease it, you know, to a use like this, because otherwise, it's just going to sit there forever.
Well, that's true, but we're kicking the can down the road even more so by committing yes to this. And I would ask if there's any, anything in the, in the planning in far as Westmont is concerned as to an alternative, as to start to remedy this rather than to just say, "Okay, here we're going to kick the can down the road and let somebody else do it," or what's going to happen?
Well, we are preliminarily talking, because it's kind of recently come to, at least to my attention, and I think Jill and I have been talking about it recently, that there have been interested parties in buying it, and they've walked away. And what can the village do, if anything, to help? And we're kicking some ideas around, and there might be some options, but it would have to be for some larger scale, very positive development that fits the comp plan, perhaps that involves some adjacent properties, et cetera. And perhaps there's some way the village can get involved to help move that forward, but right now, the talks are just preliminary.
That was the other issue we had, too, as it relates to development, that if you could get some of the properties immediately to the south, and we've talked to them, and what we've heard is that based on what they want, it just makes the numbers that much more difficult. And the other issue is the way our existing property sits, it's irregularly shaped. There's front edge on Ogden, then there's depth, and it's hard to try to get a retail center to lay out to where it would make sense. I mean, you can do it, but you've, on the east lot, it's very deep where the building is. And that was the other obstacle that we have found. We've tried everything, and I think, you know, Max is here by default with The Cellar, because he just, he doesn't want it sitting there vacant anymore either. He doesn't, it's just sitting there costing him money. It's been vacant for years. So anyway, I just wanted to add that. Pardon me.
Okay. Thank you. Did you give your name?
Mark Butler.
Mark?
Butler.
Butler?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, you're with whom?
Butler Partners. We're in Westmont.
Okay.
On Ogden, at 100 East Ogden.
Okay. Thank you. We need a motion for a special use permit request to allow the sale of used automobiles in a B2 general business district. So move?
May I interrupt before we get a second on that? We do have findings of fact for the special use, and maybe we should do those first.
Oh, okay, fine. Sorry about that.
Okay, this is for Planning and Zoning, case 16001, Midway Auto House regarding the 311 East Ogden, Westmont. Request for a special use to allow a used automobile dealership in the B2 general business district. Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Findings of fact, the proposed use, used automobile dealership at this location is a similar use to the many existing new automobile dealerships in the immediate area, and this use will not endanger the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. Proposed use will not involve any new property improvements, and is not expected to exacerbate existing stormwater flooding issues on the property. Previous used automobile dealerships at this location have not endangered the public health or general welfare. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. Findings of fact, the proposed use will not cause adverse noise, light, security, or other impacts on surrounding properties, or exacerbate existing stormwater flooding issues on this property, nor substantially diminish surrounding property values. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Findings of fact, although this property could be assembled with adjacent property for a larger development that could address the stormwater flooding problems on the property, the proposed use at this location will not impede the redevelopment of surrounding properties. Surrounding properties are already fully developed. Criteria number four, that adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Findings of fact, the property does not provide stormwater management, and it is prone to flooding. Otherwise, the property is already adequately served by utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Findings of fact, the property is improved with several points of ingress and egress which provide access to and from Ogden Avenue and Black Hawk Drive, and sufficient drive aisles shall be maintained by the applicant on the property itself. Criteria number six, that the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as regulations may be, may in each instance be modified by the Village Board pursuant to the recommendation of the Plan Commission. Findings of fact, the proposed use complies in all of the respects with the B2 district zoning regulations. A previously approved variance allows this use to operate adjacent to residentially zoned property, runs with the land, and applies to this proposed use. No other variances or waivers are required for this use. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of the special condition two. Findings of fact, the proposed use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or pose a hazard to pedestrian safety. The property has several points of ingress and egress onto Ogden Avenue and Black Hawk Avenue. Ogden Avenue is a heavily trafficked commercial road which can accommodate additional traffic for this site. Previous automobile dealerships have operated at this location without creating traffic issues. Ogden Avenue and Black Hawk Drive are currently improved with sidewalks to assist with pedestrian safety. Criteria number eight, the proposed use meets the special conditions of the special condition seven. Findings of fact, since the applicant will not perform vehicle service at this location, there's no need for a new landscape plan to screen vehicles awaiting service or customer pickup. However, it is recommended that the applicant restore the landscaping previously approved for the site to fit. The parking lot islands and green space fronting Ogden Avenue should be improved with new landscaping pursuant to an approved plan.
Did you agree with this? Raise your hand. Disagree? Okay. Okay, now, if there's any further discussion prior to our, well, let's get a motion on the floor, and I wish they probably have done that before. Again, special use permit request to allow the sale of used automobiles in a B2 business district. We get a motion? Do you move? Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Carmichael. On the motion? All in favor? Aye. Yes?
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call. Commissioner Bartel?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael? Yes. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Van Buren?
No.
What do we have?
So three noes and two yeses.
Three noes and two yeses. So you will have an op, we are not the legislating body, you will have an opportunity to make your presentation to the Village Board on the committee of the whole meeting, which will be held. When is the next one?
It will be the first meeting in March.
First?
First Village Board meeting in March.
Okay, first meeting in March. So you can check with them as to when they do it. Thank you. Thank you. Second item, Village of Westmont regarding zoning code text amendment for the following. amend Appendix A article X1V. Definitions of the Westmont zoning code regarding the video gaming definition, to remove distance separation or extriculence between establishment and video gaming terminals. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's before you today is an amendment to the zoning code regarding video gaming distance separation requirements. In October of last year, this was before the Commission, to add it to the zoning code, liquor license code, and business license code. At the time, the village was getting many requests for what we consider video gaming cafes. These cafes were getting liquor licenses through the village, through the liquor commission, stating that they were a restaurant, when in effect, the restaurant sales were very minimal in terms of the video gaming sales. Since October, and the adoption of that and placement into three sections of codes and adding it as an allowable use in the zoning code, because it had never referenced video gaming before, the Village Board and Liquor License Commission has created a new license for the video gaming cafes. And there are, I think, five licenses. All of the existing video gaming cafes have obtained those licenses, and the licenses do have a cap. So in respect, the requests for the video gaming cafes have diminished, and after discussions at the Community Development Committee and also Village Board, the discussion was, does it need to still be in the zoning code specifically because it would require variance? And there is some concern that existing businesses that would be within that 500-foot distance of each other may make those requests to the village. And by removing it out of the zoning code, but leaving it as a part of the liquor license requirement and business license requirement, it would remove the burden on a business to request the variance, it would save them money, it would save them time, but they would still need to get a waiver from the Liquor License Commission and Village Board in order to be there. So the requirement for the distance is still there, it's just it would not come through the Planning and Zoning Commission to gain approval. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Okay. We'll start with you, Mr. Carmichael. Do you have any questions on it?
Not really. I've read the material, and it, you know, it seems a very practical, common sense solution. For counsel, however, I think last fall, we thought that if going through the liquor side of the house wasn't really established in the state of Illinois, there may be appeals and...
Well, when we first looked into this, the concern was, and kind of as Joe mentioned, was the clustering of video gaming cafes in a strip center that would turn a strip center into a little mini Vegas. And it wasn't just Westmont that was getting those requests, it was towns throughout the greater Chicago area. And we researched how to stop it. And one way was to impose this distance separation requirement, and we weren't sure which would have the greatest likelihood of success if challenged legally, whether it was part of the zoning code, the business licensing code, or the liquor license ordinance. After the research, I felt confident, pretty confident that we'd survive challenges on all three fronts, but we put them in all three areas to be safe. Now that the Village Board enacted a new liquor license classification for video gaming cafes, put a cap on the number of allowable licenses, and indicated their intention that they weren't in favor of granting additional licenses for video gaming cafes, they felt that this was no longer necessary. But they did want to keep it in as an additional protection in case someone does try to cluster, even restaurants with video gaming could potentially cause a concern if they stop acting as a restaurant and convert to a video gaming cafe improperly. So we want to keep it on the books, but don't want it to be a burden, as Joe mentioned. As a long-winded answer to a very short question.
Thank you. I support it. Commissioner Sharp?
Commissioner Thomas, do you have any further questions?
No, that was my concern also, so I support it.
Commissioner Sharp?
I have some questions. So the cap of five licenses, as I understand it, each license can have five machines, so that's a total of 25 total machines in Westmont. Is that correct?
That's just for video gaming cafes. So if you have a restaurant with a liquor license, you can also apply to have video gaming machines in your restaurant with a maximum of five.
Okay, so the 500-foot distance requirement, is this covering only cafes, or any establishment that has these?
This covers any establishment, which gives the Village Board ultimately a little bit more flexibility to make sure that, you know, every restaurant in the downtown doesn't necessarily have a video gaming machine.
Must be confused, then. If you take away this distance requirement, you have a cap of five only on cafes, but not a cap on the other types of liquor licenses that allow these, how are you controlling the location?
You actually do have a cap on all liquor license classifications, including video gaming cafes, but the village encourages restaurants, and once new restaurants come in, so they've historically have increased the number of available licenses to accommodate new restaurants. But they still have a concern if a restaurant comes in that wants to have video gaming, hey, let's make sure this truly is a restaurant, that they have a bona fide menu, they have a bona fide kitchen, they've got tables, and they're not looking to derive their sole source of income from video gaming.
Right, and this would describe some of the restaurants downtown Westmont, correct, right now on Cass Avenue? Would be the restaurant-type license with the liquor, or with the...
With ancillary video gaming sales.
Ancillary video gaming, is that correct?
Right. Right.
So what is, so if we take away the 500-foot distance requirement, what is controlling the separation?
You still have the liquor and the restaurant...
Right. You still have the business license.
...and regulations. All you've done is removed the 500-foot.
From the zoning code.
From the zoning. So if I'm a restaurant and I'm within 500 feet, I no longer have the zoning code, it's just but the liquor license, what do I have to do to get a variance on that? Does jurisdiction provides that variance?
You can go directly to the Village Board to request a waiver versus going to the Planning and Zoning Commission, waiting 60 days to do a public notice, spending $500.
And that's the same for both existing businesses and new businesses? Okay.
Mr. Bartel, do you have anything?
No, I'm supportive. I'm supportive.
Yeah, I am, too. Do we, do you call for a motion on this? Okay. Oh, yes, to amend the Appendix A article. What is that? 24?
14.
14. Definition of the Westmont zoning code regarding video gaming. Definition, remove the distance separation restrictions between establishment and video gaming terminals. Who would move that?
So moved?
Okay, Commissioner Bartel, second?
Second.
Second, and Commissioner Sharp. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner... Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Carmichael? Yes. Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion passes. 4-1.
Next item, again, Village Westmont regarding zoning code text amendment for the following. Appendix A, Section 6.04 of the Westmont zoning code regarding permitted front yard setback encroachments in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I get the overhead turned on? There we go. Okay, what's before you is a proposed text amendment to the front yard setback requirements for the R3 zoning district. And more specifically, it's an encroachment into the R3 setback. Current requirement is a 35-foot setback. That was established in, I think, 1998. Before that, it was a 25-foot setback. What staff's noticed specifically over the last few years with a lot of the new home building in the areas that I would classify as the older areas of town, from 55th up to Naperville Road or Chicago Avenue, is that there are a lot of homes that were built at that 25-foot setback or even closer. There's lots of precedent that there are some 10 or 15 feet back. So, what staff is proposing is an allowance for either a homeowner that's remodeling or for a new build to look at context. So, basically, we've got what we consider what a traditional neighborhood. Front yards, front porches, close to the street, although a lot of the examples do have garages in back, it's not necessarily garage-in-back discussion. And a good example here is I've taken a photo of what I would consider the historic context where it hasn't started getting replaced with new homes. So, you have a lot of homes that are very close to the street. So, what we've found is the new home builds are kind of getting stepped back. When you drive by them, you could notice a significant difference in the neighborhood. You notice that they've, I think the trend is larger garages. We're a very transportation-centered society now. But we're getting the older homes up close to the street and the newer homes fairly far back from the street. So, what we had addressed is, well, is there a way to try to meet the context? And what staff has done is done a lot of research and determined that maybe we could allow them to encroach. But we didn't want just anything to encroach. We didn't want builders just to move their floor models or their floor plans 10 feet closer. What we said is, well, look at the context, number one. We have to establish how far you can move it up. So, if a house on either side of the property that you're looking to do construction on sets the precedent that it's gone over that 35-foot setback line, then you can move a portion of the house up. So, how far up can you move it? Up to 10 feet. So, if the house next to you is at a 15-foot setback, we'll let you bring the house up to 25 feet. If the house next to you is at 34 feet, we'll let you match the 34. What we didn't want is we didn't want to create an instance where the majority of the neighborhood is at a 35-foot setback. There's one house that happens to be at 32, and suddenly we've started letting people come forward. This is another good example that I took. You've got a new house here, I think is less than 10 years old. You've got an older home here that's close to the street. You can see a roofline of the new house here, which is about a year old, and then another house on the corner, which is right up on the corner. So, we're trying to say, well, how do we make that a better context? And the next example I'm going to show, I don't think it received a variance, so it meets the 35. But what's important here is, the house over here is set back a little bit. The house on the other side is set forward a little bit. This house kind of is right in between. And then also note a large front porch. So, the second issue is, the first issue was how far do we allow them to come? And then the second issue is, do we let them just move their entire floor plan? And after staff discussions and discussion at the Community Development Committee, it was felt that the best way to do it is say, you can bring livable space, so interior space, or features like porches out into that setback. So, if you have a floor plan where the garage sits way out in front, we're going to ask you to modify the plan a little bit, keep the garage set back a little bit, because we want to maintain a quality neighborhood and we want to maintain the character of the neighborhood. So, we've kind of created these conditions to say, we'll work with you. You don't need to obtain a variance as long as you modify your floor plan. I did do research, and actually, that doesn't read very well. Let's go ahead and use the larger one. We looked at setbacks of the neighbor, our comparable communities. We've got kind of a list of 10 that we consider very similar to us. You'll notice that the front yard setbacks, that Westmont at 35 is on the high end. LaGrange has 35, and Willowbrook has 40-foot setbacks. Many of the other communities have lesser setbacks. I also made a note, make a note that we consider any house that sits on a corner to have two front setbacks, or we call it a side yard adjoining a street, we require a 35-foot as well. And I think a good example was the December, we had a lot split, and the house was fairly kind of smushed to one side because it was on a corner. Other communities have lesser setbacks. We would allow this rule to work in both directions. So, you could potentially come forward on the lot and potentially come closer to the street if the neighborhood supports it. I did do an analysis of the most recent setback variances, so I went back about six or seven years, to kind of do an analysis to see if it was something that we could have avoided a variance or maybe modified the project. And out of the six projects there, two could have been done if you had done a modification to the plans. So, basically, if they had pushed back the garage a little bit, we could have, staff could have worked with them and said, if you improve the plan a bit, you can avoid going to Planning and Zoning Commission. And then finally, this is the fun stuff. I did kind of an analysis of what does this mean in terms of visual? So, if you look at the blue, Example 1, at the top, we have a house on either side. One is well into the 25-foot yard setback. One is between the 25 and 35. In this case, what they concurrently build is at the 35 setback. If you look below it, what we're proposing is that they can come forward. And the one feature that I haven't discussed yet is how far back does the garage need to be? We've established that a 5-foot setback, it gives some good undulation to the front of the facade, it gives a little setback, it gives a little more importance to the porch or living space. So, we've said you can bring the house forward up to 10 feet as long as you keep the garage five feet back. In Example 2, in the orange, I kind of just illustrated how far they can come. So, if you look at the first one, the entire house is at 35 feet. Then you could go to the next one, you can start bringing the house forward. The garage has to sit where it is because it's not 5-foot step back. Once the house meets that 5-foot, then the garage can come forward with it.
Can you slide that exhibit over on the screen?
Oh, sorry. So, this first example, you can see that the entire house and garage is at that 35 setback. By the time you get to this point, you can see that the house has come forward to the 25, the garage has stepped 5 foot behind. And then the last example, which I have a no on, is that the garage has not met that 5-foot setback. So, we tell them, you need to step it back a little bit further. And then finally, in Example 3, this is the corner condition where potentially, if the context of the neighborhood supports it, you could bring the front of the house up to the street 10 extra feet, and you could bring the side of the house to the side street 10 extra feet. Some of the benefits beyond what I would say are aesthetic benefits, you can reduce your lot coverage. If you're reducing the amount of driveway by pulling the house up some, you can reduce lot coverage. It's not much, because the garage can only come up a maximum of 5 feet. But when you take a 22-foot wide driveway, or in some cases, a three-car garage where you're at 27, 28 feet, and multiply that by 5, that can equate to a patio outback. There are a lot of homes that are being maxed out at their lot coverage. The builders are not providing patios. This kind of gives an extra buffer for that new homeowner or existing homeowner to have a little leeway within the lot coverage. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Joe. We normally go to the public, but since there isn't, we'll start again. This time, we'll start again with you, Jan.
Okay. I think it sounds good. I'm glad to see that the garages are back a little bit and that the facade or the main part of the house is what's shown first. So, I think that makes a lot of sense. And will you be in contact with all the builders so that you have some jurisdiction over this to be sure that this all occurs? I mean, it sounds like you're building in some context, as you mentioned.
What it is, is when the builders approach us with the, and we have a multiple number of builders that are very familiar with working within the village, they typically submit, and they submit at that 35-yard setback. This is, that, when they submit, is our opportunity to say, well, we can work with you.
Okay. That's my question.
And initially, in our research phase, I did make a few calls specifically to some of the builders and say, will this benefit you? And they said, well, we have some floor plans where the porch comes out a bit. But our typical model is very garage-forward. But we're not saying they can't build that the way it is now. We're saying if you want to modify the floor plan, bring a little more detail to the street, then it's doable.
Okay. More acceptable.
So, we're not hindering the construction type at all by doing it as an encroachment versus a change in the setback.
Okay. Well, I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm supportive.
Okay. Mr. Sharp?
I think it's great. I'm excited about the proposal. I think it's got a lot of good benefits. I think you did wonderful research, and diagrams are really fun. But I think it's going to help a lot. I mean, the pictures really do justice to the problem that our street front is facing with these homes that are newer and larger, and the bulk standards, they're different when you walk down the street. So, I think this is going to help significantly bring those into the context of our existing neighborhoods, and I'm excited to see it.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
My appreciation to staff for going that extra mile and willing to work for, with the people. It's an example of government helping instead of hindering, and it make it easier and cost-effective for people to stay in Westmont or come to Westmont based on the relationship with other municipalities and that. I'm, I support it.
Thank you.
I agree. Good job, Joe. I have a related question. Do you keep any data, any statistics on what percentage of new construction are tear-down versus vacant lot?
We do.
I'm curious what that is. I would assume that most new construction is from tear-down, just?
We have several vacant lots. We have some lots that other developers haven't used in the past, but some of them are tear-downs. So, but we can look up the exact statistics for you, because we keep?
I don't need, I was just curious, you know, more than half, less, a third?
And I think a lot were torn down some time ago. A lot of the development we're seeing right now is, there was a house, but it's been 10 or 15 years that it's been torn down. So, technically, it is a redevelopment versus a vacant lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think when we established one in 98, when we pushed it back from 25 to 35, the things were going strong, and there was a lot of infill going on, and that was a lot of tear-downs. And so, you were thinking that would become the rule rather than the exception. Today, we're seeing that these houses are sitting there all by themselves, different from everybody else, and this is not going to happen. And so, the new should conform to the old rather than vice versa. And I also think it's, it was, it's a good thing to have, be a staff position within the context of what you've gotten here, and not to make them come in for a public hearing in order to do something that should have been done anyway. So, I'm in agreement completely.
Agreed.
Well, yeah, I think in 98, there was a concern of not only the, a lot of rebuilding that was going on at the time, but, you know, the potential for McMansions to go up and line the street and kind of crowd the sidewalk, and so the setback was pushed back farther. And that never materialized, and the houses generally fit the scope of the lot. And so, the, you know, the debate is, you know, a nice centered streetscape with a more livable backyard versus trying to push everything back. And it seems like most communities prefer larger backyards and a consistent streetscape.
And I think that corner lot thing also is great, because you push a guy back 35 two ways, and he's sitting in the back corner without any heart at all. So, that's a good one, too. Okay, we don't need any findings of fact on this one, so we have, I stated the motion. Someone want to make the motion?
So, moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Bartel.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Carmichael, yes. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes.
Mitchin Adams?
Thank you. Before we adjourn, is there anything else to be brought up at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'm just, a question. Did we do the minutes? Did we approve the minutes of December?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
You voted yes.
Did I? Okay. I couldn't remember.
We have a couple updates. I'd like to thank Joe especially for his hard work on this text amendment, as you all noticed. He did an excellent job on all the graphs, the charts. He called individual communities, reached out to, you know, the local builders. We have a pretty good relationship with them, and so I think that, you know, helps and, you know, kind of walked through some issues that we were talking about with the text amendment, and went around and took photos, did aerial shots. So, you know, I felt like this was very backed up by all of his excellent research.
Was that a drone shot?
We utilize Google Maps with their permission.
Yes. Daily. And then we also have a couple other projects we've been working on. The strategic plan was adopted recently by the Village Board, so we'll, that's online. And then we can also send that to you as part of your packets if you'd like. And then we also had a downtown study completed specifically in the Cass and Burlington area to talk about whether or not we should be considering multifamily, residential, and commercial on the ground floor, just, you know, more density and development in the downtown. So, we're excited about all these projects coming through, and we'll be sending them your way.
Can you update us on any of the projects or the things that we passed but never came to fruition for one reason or another? For example, which ones? Is there a drive-in on Ogden Avenue that was started and not completed?
Oh, like the Hardee's?
Yeah.
But yes, the franchisee went bankrupt and lost, I think, a couple hundred stores. So, we are currently working with the property owners who have taken over the property owner, property to see if we can get a new development in there. So, if a drive-through restaurant were to come through, that would come through the Planning and Zoning Commission again for a special use.
And that bankruptcy is a Chapter 11 reorganization, so it's possible that Hardee's will get back on their feet. They have a number of stores throughout the country that are affected by this, and I think their goal is reorganization, and that store could potentially open up as a Hardee's.
Anything else? Call for a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Sharp? Second, Commissioner Bartel. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.